Call board order, we start with the pledge of allegiance and integrity, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll do call board roll call, starting on my right.
Counselperson Josh Earn.
Counselperson Brett Byer.
Mayor Jimmy John Kane.
Counselperson Craig Henson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Almond.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda, any additions from staff?
Should be good.
And they have tabled. Here with the motion. Motion approved, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries approval of council meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes of October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make the motion to approve.
With the motion to approve, we have a second.
Second then.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries, then we'll look for approval of the workshop meeting minutes of October twenty-sixth.
I'll make the motion to approve.
With the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries, that'll take us to finance accounts payable, any of the additional listing there also? Any questions, direct them to my director Carlo, please.
I don't understand why I look over these all the time in the afternoon, and then I come here and I still feel like I can't make a motion to approve until I look at them again, like what changes?
The tree removal on Second Street, this is assess taxes, is that?
That's part of the hazardous tree, we'll really do it if they want to petition us, then we pay for it and put that on their taxes.
Yeah, thank you. I'll make the motion to approve.
A second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That'll take us into motions in general business, and the first one under general business tonight is going to be Eagle one. But a project presentation by David Waters, is it?
Yep.
Why am I fifty years old, Gary works way harder than I do, this is already killing me, it's going off of the readouts.
The park board recently heard a presentation from David, who's in the process of obtaining his eagle badge. Part of the process is for David to present to the governing body who can approve this project as being submitted. The park board, VFW and public works director Haley have been working with David on this and are recommending approval of the project. David, do you have anything you want to tell the board?
Ah, sure.
Don't step up a little bit, please.
Yep. Hi guys, my name's David Waters, as he said, I chose my project to build a time capsule at the new veterans park out right outside of Sturgill. I chose this project because it meant a lot to me, my grandfather served in the army, so I wanted to remember him and all the men and women who have served for our country. It will be a three by three foot on the base and four foot tall. We're gonna have a stainless steel metal time capsule inside of it, and it's going to be concreted in, so no one can take it or steal. There's gonna be a six foot by twenty foot path leading up to it, and it's gonna be placed on that. It's gonna be off the right side of the big Z bone, it's gonna be one foot off of it. There's gonna be a rock in between it and there, it's all set out. So if you guys want to go see it, you can go get it right now. We've gotten all of our approvals, and I have sent it into the Boy Scouts for approval, and I had a conference with them, and they have approved the project, and I'm ready to go.
Cool. Questions or comments?
So how long have you been working on this already?
Since the middle of summer, I've been working on it.
So I probably, well, you don't come to all these meetings, you don't understand that I talk too much, but I'm telling you that right now. So all of you, every Eagle Scout project that I've seen so far has been worthy, I mean, I'm really impressed with all of them. Yours about Florida being this afternoon, when I read it, I think it's absolutely amazing. And what I feel like you've already looked into, and some of the things that you thought about, the tools you need, I know you're gonna run into a bunch of headaches, and you're gonna need extra help on things, and that's just how it goes, but I really just want to be on the record to say I'm really impressed, I would assume that we'll approve this, and I hope we do. Really, I'm proud of you, man, already, it's gonna be hard to get it done. Looks like you got some driveways to shuttle this winter and whatnot, but what a cool, cool thing. The only cruddy part of it is, the odds of me being, you know, alive at age one hundred when you plan on opening this thing back up, pretty low, so I'm probably gonna have to throw something in there, just to say Craig was here at school, Vikings, did they win one yet, you know, I just wanted to say. But pretty awesome, man, seriously, nice work, nice work.
I'm really happy you chose the VFW park to do it, I can't say enough about that, especially coming this time of year, Veterans Day is the perfect time to bring this to listeners.
Thank you very much for honoring all those people.
No problem.
Have you decided what you're gonna put in there yet, or where you're gonna?
Um, not really.
But I would assume that it'll be open up to, you'll figure out who you wanna get input from.
Yes.
You know, I mean, clearly.
City VFW.
The mayor's lived here for a hundred and three years, you should try and get something in there.
So you're gonna be thinking up what to put in there?
I thought it was four foot tall. You know, you might be able to get one of your receipts for your point zero one cent that you got from the federal subsidies. I'll make a motion to approve this, and I think, again, I can't stress enough, I think it's fantastic.
The park board, just wanted to add, the park board did, he presented last night at that meeting, and they all liked the idea too, and blessed support for it, so, and I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes, and once again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck, David, you say a lot of work in front of you, but I can see you've done a lot already, so it's pretty cool.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you can stay or you can leave, if you want to listen.
Most people leave, man, I'm just saying.
Mark's gonna wanna get your picture.
Yeah, and I don't think everybody was working the, I don't know if she ever started the meeting, especially Sean Hale.
I think you should get a picture of him behind the podium, it looks more professional. Yeah, Mark, up here, he's up there doing his presentation.
Jimmy, you should be up there, you'd be the first one in the box.
He's calling her to be.
Let's look, wear your high heels.
Thanks again, David. Alright, next item tonight is a public hearing for Schuman Business Park. Even though he's been smart enough to hear it. So, close the regular reading, the public hearing is going to be to consider the final plat for Schuman's Business Park Forest along with the vacation of a ten foot right away on both sides of Schuman Drive Northwest, and plating the east side of the city engineer over multi-review letters attached, develop an agreement to be signed by the Schuman Family Trust prior to leasing the final plat. City attorney left has prepared the utility easement agreement while warning the city to the Schuman Family Trust, the planning commission, you know, second, I'm bringing it through. I'll now close the regular meeting, open the public hearing, Schuman Business Park Forest, we have a written or oral? Do you have anything you'd like to add or comment on this?
Well, you guys have all seen this before, so I'll just give you a little refresher of the development, so, it's just under twenty acres, five lots in the industrial park, so it's all industrially zone. One of the lots is already spoken for. Cultus Act going through the middle, construction, the way it sits right now, I believe they've got all utilities in, all the services are in, I think they're gonna start putting aggregate based down. We'll see how far they get with how weather permits this year, but that's pretty much suggestive in a year, if there's anybody who has any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mark versus engineer? Anyone else like to speak in program for this public hearing? Well, hearing nothing then, or no written or oral, we'll close the public hearing. We're back to the regular reading, alright, we'll have two motions, first is approval of the utility easement vacation, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Number two will be approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash approving resolution twenty twenty-one, approving the final plat of Schuman Business Park Forest. Do we have a motion to approve the final plat?
Approved.
With a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, any further questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. You can go on and start selling.
We did.
Alright.
Thank you.
Just on your eyes, just a little plot, I told you after the fact, out of one, two, three, four, five, which was the one that sold? Four, I'm really glad it's me, but just curious.
Four.
Number four.
Yep.
So are you looking at that one too?
Thinking about, you know, well, I was gonna go talk about, but I'm a little late to that.
Craig, you can do number three, Craig, it's the biggest one.
Alright, we'll give you the same opportunity, you can stay or leave if you'd like to do.
You really wanna get rid of people?
No, no, we're glad when they stay, we're kinda surprised if they stay.
I got a twenty minute speech planned here at the U of D. Thank you, guys.
You might have to do that at the U.
Next is a variance request, I have two oh two, Lula Place Northeast, Brzezinski. Planning commission is a variance side rear setback, the planning commission held a public hearing on November second to consider a two foot variance from required three foot side and rear yard setback from accessory structure for section thirteen thirty to point zero three development requirements. The intent is to be able to set the ten by twelve shed as far back into the yard to avoid encroaching as much as possible in a thirty-five foot drainage easement. In this case, the actual water flow is closer to the bottom of the easement, which is why we allow the shed to be placed within the easement. Planning commission is recommending approval of this. This council actually requests will be to approve a two foot side rear yard emergency.
Um, you know, I think I've got them mixed up.
Okay, let me check this one. Let's do, let's do this one.
Let's do the buzzer.
Yeah, mine shows the lower one, it's the first one.
Yep.
But I think I've got the RCA something wrong.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm serious.
Yeah, the description's wrong.
Or I kind of, um.
So this will be for eleven seventeen Peterson Court Northwest, Thomas.
No, this one is for the Lula. They're both pretty similar, so let's do the Brzezinski one, on Lula Place. And the first part of the RCA, talking about the thirty-five foot drainage easement, is correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry. The Brzezinski one has thirty-five foot easement.
There's a thirty-five?
The thirty-five foot easement, yes.
Well, that's one we're on, then we're on the right one.
Who's on the right here, is that you?
He's asking for the two foot variance side and rear yard. The actual water.
Wait, so you can set it as, like, a foot from the property line is where you're saying, right, right in the corner, okay.
Correct, yep.
You guys have any problems with it?
No, it's, the backyard is basically the fairway parking lot, so there is no, no houses behind him in the house. Next door to the neighbor on the right side is, is fine with the two.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Alright, we have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Brzezinski one's done then, so now we're onto the next variance request, which is eleven seventeen Peterson Court Northwest, Thomas. Tim, we forgot this, right, so the planning commission held a hearing on November second to consider two foot variance from required three foot yard setback for accessory structure thirteen thirty point oh five development requirements. The applicant's requesting variance in order to be a ten foot separation requirement with the house and garage, due to a twenty-five foot drainage easement in the rear yard. The applicant feels the best place to set the ten by twelve shed is to not have it in the middle of the yard. He has received approval from a joint department or Radcliffe Homes. Intent is to be able to set the ten by twelve shed as far back into the yard to avoid encroaching as much as possible on the drainage. Planning commission is recommending approval of this variance also. Once again, I guess the question is to you, Josh, you guys had no problem with this, you looked it over and?
Yeah, everything looked good, there's a vacant lot on that side, so there's no homes, there is no house built there yet, so they're gonna adjust whatever they needed to as they're building it, they don't wanna stare at the shed.
Any questions, comments? Council actually requested is to approve the two yard side, two foot side yard, excuse me.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next. This will be from city engineer, is requesting authorization to obtain, this is a twenty twenty-three CIP is the description. Authorization to obtain the topographic survey data from the twenty twenty-three CIP Fifth Avenue Southeast, which would be Highway thirty-two, Sixth Street Southeast. As was previously discussed, this is an M S A S route, and the city needs to work ahead on the plans in order to advance funding to the state for this project. Schedule, city engineer is looking for, November twenty-third, six P M, workshop to discuss full project scope. November twenty-third, seven P M was a regular meeting, calling a public hearing, and December fourteenth, at seven P M, a public hearing. So our action request would be to authorize authorization to obtain topographic survey data and set workshop on November twenty-third at six P M. Any questions for the city engineer, or any discussion? We're all good, forward and forward, having the workshop, and this will be the.
Nothing more, I look forward to.
Alright, then I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
To authorize to obtain topographic surveys and workshop. Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Next one on the agenda is proposed utility changes, fee changes. City council reviewed the proposed utility bill changes at the ten twenty-six twenty twenty-one workshop, there were additional information that was needed. So attached, by inspector Carla has attached, some of the information we asked for there about the different scenarios with the stormwater increase, you see the one for thirty-five cents, one for fifty, and one for seventy-five. The other fees, we gotta decide on one of those three, Carla?
Yep, and then there is examples, I took a few of the businesses based on what they have and looking at those fees, just to look at the examples of what it would then cost them to go forward with those changes.
And we'll also see refuge increase seven cents per unit, correct? That'd be based on more units used, the street light fee increases to dollars. So, we're in our big decision, which one, thirty-five, fifty, seventy-five? Discussion?
Well, we better talk about something. We better discuss it, can't just not, like. So here's my concern in this, we talked about this a little bit, and I need a refresher. When's the last time that we changed this? I know a little bit, the lights haven't been for a while, or is it the other way around?
So the street light fee, we changed in twenty twenty, four dollars. Went from two dollars to four dollars, which hasn't been changed since at least twenty fifteen. Stormwater has remained the same since twenty eighteen. And the refuse charge, we increased in twenty twenty, from six cents to ten cents.
And the revenue charge, is that as far as city life cleanup looks, it's still necessarily enjoyed use, and it gets bigger, larger every year?
Yeah, I agree, that sucks great, and I, my biggest concern in this is, well, number one, I think it sucks to increase any prices. And I get why, I mean, don't get me wrong. I, I guess what I would implore out of you guys is to discuss enough that if we're gonna do it, I don't wanna keep coming back every year. I wanna put it as something where we can leave people alone for a while. And if, you know, so whatever that means out of this, and I don't know that it necessarily means the top. Obviously, that makes the most, it makes sense that I would take the money, 'cause I have to get back to the increasing move, but I'm just not a big fan of doing it every year, I don't like it.
We haven't made some changes since twenty twenty, and then before that, it had been about three or four years. And only barely changed is just based on cost, just to try to get us back to a ground zero, so we're not gonna be.
But like stormwater rise, what was, when we changed it, you said it hadn't been changed since between twenty fifteen and twenty, right? And since, at that time, what was the increase?
Stormwater was changed, was changed in twenty eighteen, so it was two dollars and forty cents in twenty seventeen, and twenty eighteen, we went to four dollars and forty cents. And then we have not touched the stormwater since twenty eighteen.
And what was the increase, did you say from two seventy to, I didn't hear you, four forty?
Two forty to four forty, so two dollars.
Just something to think about too, we do hear from people saying that they'd rather have the smaller increases, rather than waiting period.
Really?
And then have it on the big one.
Every year, man, the government just keeps coming back, every year, it just digs in your pocket, I guess I see your.
I think it's fifty fifty.
Well, expenses are going up on maintaining the storm crews, obviously fuel. Something happened, something happened ten months ago that made everything triple or quadruple. Totally need a magic wand to fix it, yep.
We're just trying to give them smaller increases, so they're easier for people to get through, rather than hit them with something big.
Josh?
Yeah, I kinda like that, the smaller increase over time, and maybe we do have to do it more than every two or three years, but I'd rather do that than jump it up to a bigger amount.
Grant, what's your thoughts?
I'm for the smaller increase, just because we probably, more people can't pay their water bill than complains on anything else.
Jeremiah?
So the rate we're talking about thirty-five cents, or fifty cents, or seventy-five cents increase? So that'd be from four dollars and forty cents to say four dollars and seventy-five cents.
Correct.
If we go with thirty-five cents, and what is that rate based, or multiplied by?
So the storm.
Yard size, or?
Stormwater is based on a meter, so you only have, you have a set fee for stormwater, you don't get it, like, your water in the sewer is based on how many units you use, the stormwater is just based on one unit, based on the fact that you have a meter.
So this is thirty-five cents a month, or basically?
Yeah, for residence.
Residential, it's, it's, it's a little bit different, but it's still not going to be a huge increase to them as well.
That's the one thing that I get complaints about the most, other than anything is, why is my water bill so high? You know, I could just tell them, stop taking so many showers, but that doesn't, you know, help so much.
And just to give you more information too, we had gotten some information earlier on in the year, Byron had done a study, kinda looking at water bills, looking at our taxes, looking at all of those things. We are smack in the middle of all of it, where our water rates are really in the middle of everything, we're not low and we're not high for cities.
They do look at their bills, and there's administrative charges and stuff on the bills, that they don't look at that as water, or they look at it as water, and it's other stuff, they just get one bill up, tie it all right into the deal.
So what, there's something against me to do with fifty cents, I can tell I'm gonna be outboarded on this, that's a perfectly fine thing.
You have a motion?
I'll let somebody else make the motion, 'cause I'll be the one to just vote against.
I'll make the motion to go with fifty cents, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Opposed?
Aye.
Carries. So go with fifty cents on that, that'll be the seven cents of the dollar, correct?
Correct.
Correct, thank you. E D A, CEDA twenty twenty-two contract. We received the attached CEDA contract for twenty twenty-two for five days, forty hours a week, at the amount of eighty-nine thousand six hundred forty-six. Staff will be joy at two days per week, twice in three days, this is a three percent increase year to year for this contract. Staff has recommended a full CEDA contract be approved.
I'm gonna make that motion, and I'm gonna add on to it, that I'm super thrilled at the work that both Joya and Lexi have done for the city, and I continue to do. And maybe I have a different angle, because I get to see it even more on E D A, but man, they do good work, in my personal opinion, just the rest, the whole staff does really good, don't get me wrong, but these two have been killing it, and I see it firsthand, and I really appreciate it, so, I'm making a motion.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have other questions or discussion? Anyone else anything you'd like to ask? Hearing none, then we'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next item, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two snow removal. We're looking for approval, Sean finally got an applicant, and he feels very good at it. Public works director Haley has recommended Harry Olson, one of the positions, to help with snow removal, because Olson doesn't have a C D L, and won't be driving a snowplow, drug and alcohol testing is not required. Council actually requested to approve Harry Olson for on-call snow removal.
So what do you have to do, Sean, since you don't have the C D L?
A lot of these guys, you don't need them for running the loaders, the skid steers, you don't need, it's only for the plow trucks, the big tractor, tiny axles and single axle plow trucks. So they're in pickups most of the time, or he'll be in a pickup most of the time, if someone's gone, we can put him in a skid steer if we need to.
Any questions or discussion on, who approve or disapprove? Alright, looking for a motion to approve Harry Olson for on-call snow removal.
So I'm making that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries, that takes us out of motions in general business, that takes us, the mayor's staff and assault reports, tonight, the mayor's report. See you guys, see you later, Dave, thanks a lot. Mayor's report tonight, we'd like to send our sympathies to the families of Beth Thompson, Margaret Reed, Justin Maminga, Doug Langru, Neil Eckhart, Stuart Smith, Sylvia Finaszki.
Calvin Speller. Calvin Speller.
We'd like to also recognize, we've got received a couple thank you notes, one from the family of former mayor Larry Gray, thanking staff and the city and everyone we sent a memorial for him. We also have a nice thank you to the city hall and staff for planting of a memorial tree for Mike Seuss. She was, Judy was very happy about where it was planted, where she could see it, plus notifying her that it was planted, so. Happy seventieth Thursday to Kevin Malone. Kiwanis Club is sponsoring the fifth sock at Tumon Sock Drive, donations will be given to our local schools, drop off your donations at Bremmer Bank, last year distributed over four hundred and fifty socks. The eleventh annual Thanksgiving Day five K is coming up, you can register for that at Gray's Church. We'd like to send a thank you out to Operation Roundup, to People's Energy for the grants that were handed out to the fire department, the VFW, and VCI. And also like to remind you, this is a big, this is a big, big day coming up this week, and that's Veterans Day. If you read the star this week, the back page, it has a very, very nice article on the back page regarding the Legion, the VFW, and all other, the, the, the Legion Auxiliary, the Junior Auxiliary, Sons of the Legion. The time and money and things that they contribute to our community, and the youth of our community. And all, they really ask nothing in return, they just ask, come out and visit us, stop and have some meat, have a drink, have a little friendship, visit out here a little bit. They'll give it all back to our community. And I don't want anybody to forget, and I'm really happy that this year we get to go back into the schools for Veterans Day, that that's coming up, and that'll be this Thursday. They gave us two times, eleven for the middle school, and twelve for the senior high. They gave us two times, eleven for the middle school and twelve for the senior high, which is fantastic. Everyone needs to remember that they don't need to wait to Veterans Day to thank the veterans. There's less than one percent of the population is active veterans, less than seven, or just a little over seven percent is actually living veterans of our population that protected all the rest of us in this country, giving us all the freedoms and rights that we enjoy and abuse and, and they ask nothing for it, they just ask the world. Be a good citizen, be a good American. Thanksgiving's coming up, that's the day we give thanks for everything we have, but Veterans Day is the day you've got to remember to thank the veterans that we have what we have to be thankful for. So I would like each and every one of you to, next time you see a veteran, at least recognize them, shake his hand, thank him. They're all over, they're in every state, they're in every community of this country. There's approximately eighteen million living veterans right now in our country. So you should be able to find them to thank, they're, they're a very select group, and they ask nothing back. So that's, I gotta shut up, I could go on all night about veterans, but they're quite a group of people, so. I'm not a veteran, I sad to say, my father was, so I'm a proud son of the Legion. Jeremiah's a very good son of the Legion.
That was great.
So, yeah. So thank you, and don't forget veterans, that's all I have to say. Administrative report?
Our reports in your packet, just wanna highlight one item on the second page, where we talked about some funds that counties allocating out of their ARBA dollars, and that's to try to promote additional housing. And they've allocated fifty lots, if we are able to come up with that, for Stewartville to be subsidized for an end user, to get about a ten-thousand-dollar savings on a home of three-hundred-thousand dollars or less. Because believe it or not, that level of affordability has moved into that category, the two-fifty to three-hundred.
Because they're not counting the price of the lot, though.
Right.
It's just the price of the house.
No, yeah.
So if, if you, you're gonna reason, there'll be a lot of houses in our town that'll fit.
That can fit that. Mayor's met with Commissioner Flynn a couple times over the last, what, two months here, three months I suppose, because they've been working on this for a while. I just had a recent meeting with him, he's hoping our E D A and the council will consider maybe some, I'll call it matching programs to maybe help. One example is, do we as a city say a building permit is cut by ten percent? Or you get a discount, or a second whack fee if this promotes another development to be in the play? Do you knock off a discount there to show our community's participation in it to make it good for an end user? So things to think about here over the next several months as this program comes into play and as we get the additional information when we get past ideas.
Doesn't all gotta be used one year, isn't it, like twenty-six or something?
Yep, twenty-six, so there may be a few years to do it, come up with ideas. Commissioner Flynn said they're hopeful all the communities come up with their own unique programs, and as Craig pointed out, our E D A has done a great job of all sorts of different incentive programs, mainly for the commercial or business side of things. Well, here's an opportunity to maybe look at residential side, so we'll keep you posted.
Any questions for Minister Vissel? All right, thanks. Finance Director Carla?
I have been working on trying to get everything settled and ready for the truth in taxation, the beginning of December, and going back through budgets and trying to get all of the end-of-year stuff that comes, comes for us to get all of that completed. The one thing that I do wanna kinda give you guys a heads up on is next Wednesday, November seventeenth, there is a rave event that's, that's through ready. And we actually have a Jimmy Sal adressing from our community is going to be recognized at this event. We actually have additional tickets, so if there are, is anybody that wants to go, it's from four-thirty to six-thirty that evening. And it's just in Rochester at Saint Mary's University. So if I can get names from some, from everybody by noon on Friday, I will get those to Molly, and she will make sure you guys have name tags and things are ready to roll for that. So it's kind of a, it's a nice thing since we do have a community business and to be able to go and support them if we can. I know the E D A and the Chamber has.
Foundation, she and the foundation are helping sponsor part of this. And it's a sly to the family, it's a lifetime achievement award for them.
So that is there. The other thing too that we'll, we'll go through the next meeting is, and I'm sure Vance will go over, is we're trying to work with our local banks to look at some financing options for the new fire truck. And so I'm actually been very pleasantly surprised how fast I've gotten information back from all of our local banks, and the response of them really trying to get us a good rate to work them.
Good dear, any questions for Finance Director? All right, thank you, get your names if you wanna go to the. Public Works, Sean?
I've been gone for the last week and a half, I've taken some vacation time, so I didn't get a report put in.
Shoot it.
Sure. I do want to, we did, I did come in yesterday and went with Ben now to Wisconsin to pick up our new plow truck that we'd ordered. Finally got it back, and it is ready to be used for plowing snow this year. So the process is now taking that long. And on that note, our plow truck that we bought last year has issues with it, and it's been out, it's under warranty, but they can't fit the parts. It's already been out there for two months now, and we have no idea when we're gonna get that back. So our idea is we're probably not gonna list this truck on public surplus for sale, the one that this one is replacing, until we get the king sign down on that other one. So we will be listing that truck for sale once we get that one back in service. But we'll hold it until we, just in case, we had to wait all year for a lawnmower to get the parts, so it's just the way the world is now.
So you have no idea when the parts are coming?
No, I talked to him yesterday, and said they still don't have parts, and they still didn't have a timeframe for it. So. Well, we figured the best way to get through it is to not sell that one yet. That truck, we're estimating bringing seven to eight thousand dollars on public surplus, so for that price, to hold on to it till we get through with that.
All right, any other questions for Sean? Thank you, Sean. City engineer reported, Jenna?
C R P project has wrapped up, so SOT's complete, everything over there. We will go walk through next year before we get the wear and horse down, and then we go to warranty period, so. The West Development Utility Extension and Barrique Estates will have a pre-construction meeting next week, and actually I think we're installing silk plants soon and today, so they're ready to go and wanting to go. So be moving forward with construction there. We're working on plans for next year's C I P, and thank you for authorization to go to GoCo for twenty-three. Hoping to beat the snow and get the information, so we can get moving on that one.
Any questions for Jenna? All right, thank you. Laborary directors report, not tonight, I saw Nate today with a cab of coffee at.
Yeah, they're good.
They're great. Decent crowd here, I wasn't there, Lexi, and they all, they all got a real kick out of me. And they enjoyed it, and they had a lot of good experiences.
And a human factor there?
A little bit. Fire Chiefs report, Vance?
As Carla said, I had a good finance meeting the other day where Pierce Financial came and just talked about what the financial options are through them. There were some things with prepayment that actually are beneficial for us. Carla and Bill are, as Carla said, reaching out to the banks, trying to figure out what the best way for the finance this is. Currently, I think where we left it, we're gonna use fifty percent of funds out of the capital fund to put down on a truck, and then we'll finance a remainder of it either five or seven years, is where we're at. Kind of thing I would want to do with that. Carla, we've worked together on that, just when we come forward with the RCA to authorize the purchase of it, we'll give you a better view of it. But the capital fund, even with purchasing this truck, planning to replace Rescue Two in six or seven years from now, and buying Engine One ten years from now, is still financially solid, we're not gonna go without money, so there is plenty of money, the way we got it set up, that we will be able to continue to do what we're talking about. Paying fifty percent down and then, and a five-year loan for the apparatus moving forward. So it, Rescue Two is actually, we just pay cash for that one, so. The way Carla's helped us set it up, we're actually financially stable for our apparatus fund for the foreseeable future, even with the purchases that we're gonna be looking at in the next ten, twelve years from now. So they will be bringing that forward later this month, once we identify where the correct places we wanna finance that, we'll bring forward an RCA getting authorization to, to purchase that out. Another thing, Joya, we talked about CEDA earlier, earlier, Joya actually helped us write a grant to People's Co-op, which we were successful at. We got a two-thousand-dollar grant from People's Co-op, which will allow us to buy new four-gas monitors. I think I've talked about this in the past, the four-gas monitors we have are an end-of-service life, life, getting parts for them are relatively difficult. Joya knew about this grant, she worked within the right for us, so we got a two-thousand-dollar grant, which will pay for about eighty percent of those monitors. Will pay for the other twenty percent of the operating budget, so just another feather in her hat on where she's saving us a good amount of money. So I think, at least for the fire department, she's been phenomenal for us to work with. From a response standpoint, we had, last month was our busiest month ever for medicals. We had sixty-three medicals, we went back to two thousand seventeen, we never had that many medicals in a single month. So call line, as we talked about, continues to go up. We had ten fire calls last month, had a gas leak, two fire alarms, three motor vehicle accidents, two vehicle fires, two structural fires. One of them was relatively minor, it was a microwave fire. The other one was the total of the trailer over on Twenty Street Southwest or Northwest, like, where we did that. I think everybody knows about it, we had a fire Friday night on Tower Four, fully involved detached garage. The winds were blowing pretty hard, we actually had critical damage to the house to the south of it, but we were able to keep it to exterior damage. With that, the garage was a total loss, but all the homes were occupiable later that night, so we were able to keep everybody in their homes with that. So crews did an excellent job, first-hand crew was able with onboard water to get the explorers taking care of that house. We'd extend to that, probably about, I think about two, three minutes, we could have been fighting two house fires, not just one. And then get that fire knocked down relatively quickly, so worked out, the guys did a really, guys and gals did a great job on that. Truly, just some stuff going on with the apparatus right now. Engine one, which is one ready to replace, had a transmission controller issue. Taken down a freightliner to have it looked at, it's an Allison transmission, which is a well-known transmission utilizing everything. But the controller is sold, they don't make the controller anymore. So what they're doing is they're taking our controller, they're in a shop that refurbishes the controllers, so it's getting refurbished down in Texas, I believe what they're doing. And we'll get it back to us, so just starting to show the age of that truck, another reason why we're wanting to move it to a reserve status with that. That's really, really about it. Oh, one last thing, just a good thing, they talked about it before, the CPR instructors, we've got seven CPR instructors with the department now. We are starting to do outreach, so we're doing some training for the schools, we're doing some training for different entities in the city. And right now it's at very low cost, just because these instructors have to teach a class and be observed teaching a class, so we're doing them for a very low cost. Once that is done, we will start charging more for those. Our cost will be much less than I break across and stuff like that, but we'll be running that through the fire department, so I haven't talked to Carla yet. We will build from the city for that to be done, the city will get the money for that, and then we're gonna pay our instructors a very minimal amount to be able to cover their time to do that. But it's gonna be a revenue source for the fire department and also providing that service here in the community that we currently have, so we're having quite a few people reach out to us for CPR training.
Any questions for Chief? Sounds like we're staying busy, Chief.
We're getting there.
All right, Pool Director report tonight, that'll take us Committee Commission Board reports, Chamber of Commerce. There's nothing in our packet tonight, but don't forget, it won't be long, Winterfest will be here, he's coming right up. E D A, H R A?
Meeting next Tuesday.
All right, Finance? Nothing right now, okay, Library?
Meeting next week.
All right, you gonna make it?
Ten-four.
All right, Art Board?
Last night.
Personnel?
Everybody's super happy to are here.
Good. Good report from Personnel. Diane Zoney, we got minutes on November second, you got anything to add, Josh?
No, everything's keeping us busy, so it's good.
You got anything coming up this next month?
Yes.
Public Safety?
No.
No, we're all safe?
Yeah.
Yeah, Public Works? Nothing for Public Works, ready?
Just that rave event that Carla mentioned, so.
You have a call?
Minutes in your packet, nothing to add.
Stu, one-eighty?
No, I'm finished.
Okay. Nothing from Transit Advisory Committee tonight, so there's no communications in our packet. I don't see anyone left that would wanna use the old mic unless one of the staff wants to use it. Guess not. It takes to start five motion in the evening, I'll make a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned.